All right, I believe we are ready to start whenever you guys are.
I'd like to call this meeting in order at one oh one P M. Uh, so roll call.
Okay, let me pop it up.
Okay. Is Youth Commissioner Aragno here?
Uh, here.
Youth Commissioner Bender? Youth Commissioner Chu? Youth Commissioner Ying? Youth Commissioner Garcia?
Here.
Um. Youth Commissioner Ada Hee? Yeah, um, there you go. Youth Commissioner Carmen Hee?
Here.
Youth Commissioner Huen?
Here.
Youth Commissioner Amal Katamari? Youth Commissioner Drew Katamari?
Here.
Youth Commissioner Kim? Youth Commissioner Kazarli?
Hi.
Youth Commissioner Lister?
Here.
And then Youth Commissioner Wolf?
Here.
Um, now moving on to the approval of minutes. From the December fourteenth meeting.
Believe that was Carmen motion to approve the minutes? And then do we have a second?
It was Carmen, sorry, it was Carmen, um, and who?
Um, I Lily Huen, second.
Thank you.
All right, and then we have to do a roll call votes for everyone, um, to say. I or no for the approval of the minutes?
All in favor, what is that like term, right? Like all in favor who approve a minute, say I?
Yeah, but then now we have to do it so that Emily has to say each commissioner's name and they say I or no.
Okay, so that that's a new system, okay, good.
Yeah.
Just say I when I call your name, so Youth Commissioner Aragno?
Hi.
Youth Commissioner Bender? Oh, I forgot she's not here, okay. Youth Commissioner Garcia?
Hi.
Youth Commissioner Carmen Hee?
Hi.
Youth Commissioner Lily Huen?
I.
Youth Commissioner Drew Katamari?
Epstein.
Youth Commissioner Kim, or Cassie Kim? Youth Commissioner Kazarli?
I.
Youth Commissioner Lister?
I.
And then Youth Commissioner Wolf?
I.
I think you missed Ada and Lamog.
Oh, sorry. Uh, Youth Commissioner Ada Hee?
Ada, we couldn't hear you for some reason, I don't know if the mic is working.
Ada, if you can, type in the chat and then I can put you on, that's why I didn't call her name, because I thought she wasn't here, sorry, that's my bad. Okay, and then Youth Commissioner Amag? I'm sorry.
I was here.
Okay. Thank you.
Now moving on to any oral requests? Any public comments?
No public comments.
Okay, so any announcements?
No announcements right now.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Ang is in the meeting.
Oh. Awesome, Caitlin was able to join.
Okay, so, um, since there are no public comments, moving on to old business?
Which there is none for this meeting, since it's a special meeting.
So now we go straight to new business, so term review so far is the first thing on our agenda for new business.
Yeah. Do you say, I can't hear you.
Oh, what did I say?
Yeah.
Oh, I said like moving up to new business, um, so the first thing on the agenda is like the term review so far, so reviewing the like. The first half of our term, uh, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, you know, thank you all for being able to make it to this special meeting, and it's an additional. Time we have to come together, but, um. Rebecca is here and her and I were talking and just thought it'd be a great. Thing to do is kind of see where everyone's at, be able to talk to each other about how events are going and kind of. You know, how the term's been so far, because we're halfway through the term and, um. Yeah, we only have until May to do anything else that you guys want to do. So, um, I wanted this kind of section to be. Talking about how you think things have been going. Um, I want you guys to be very honest, you know, if things have been not working well for you. Um, I'd love to, you know, hear about that and. Know how things are kind of going, um, and these are just some kind of questions that. I thought about, you can answer them if you think of anything that has to go with them, or it can be something totally different. But I'd love to just kind of hear how you guys have been doing so far this term.
So far for me, the term has been pretty vibey, you know, in terms of like when we're all at home at the same time. Still having the commission still going on, I think is like. Really great opportunity, um, for the fact that, you know, doing it for the past, now that this being my third year doing it. I was kind of worried, you know, initially that since we're going to be starting off the term. In a pandemic, right? Like, how are we going to get things done? Or, you know, would we still be able to have like that same kind of, you know, close relationship that we had if we were in person? Um, but so far, I feel like this term has like had a great start and is like, you know, still going strong in terms of everybody, you know. Being involved, they were trying to make that difference and still making, you know, Campbell a great area for everyone to be a part of, so I think. You know, so far it's been pretty well, going well, it's been going well, and it's been a really enjoyable process.
I think the term has been really fun, um, even though it is online, I still have like some way to communicate with everyone in a, in order to make the community better. I do wish that we could see each other in person, and especially since it was my first year, um, doing it online. It's kind of sad, but at the same time, I'm still having fun in making the community better, so I think it's been really good.
Um, I can go next. Can you guys hear me now? Okay. So as in terms of how the term has been, I think, I think it's been going pretty well, actually, I was like, this is my second year in the youth commission. And I feel like we've gotten more done in the pandemic than we have in previous years. And I like how everybody's engaged and like how we still have the team dynamic, like we know all of each other's names, we get to talk. And we've learned lots of things about each other, so it's really cool, and the pandemic hasn't disrupted that. And then I think one thing we could work on is communication, because we're all very busy with like other passions. So it's kind of hard to find times for subcommittee meetings, because then it requires extensive coordination and a lot of time. It's like, no, all of us are able to meet up. And then we have to end up updating one member, but that's fine, so I think it's been a pretty good term.
Yeah, I agree that it's been a good term, um, I think that it's really amazing that we find, found ways to like adapt, even though everything is online. Um, and I think that it's been interesting to see like what new ideas that we can come up with. Um. I think that. Julie, I think you've been a really great staff liaison, and I like that everything you've done, I think communication between the entire, like. Commission as a whole has been better than this, better this year than other years. Um. I agree with Ada about how sometimes subcommittee meetings are a little bit hard to schedule, but I think overall they've been. Okay, and having like subcommittee meetings are definitely helpful in planning outside the weekly meetings. Um. And I think the workload has been okay. Yeah, like I think we've had some pretty well spaced out events.
Um, this is my first year, so I don't really have anything to compare it to, but. I agree most of other, with what other people are saying, like, I think. The workload isn't too much for me, and I think it's nice to have people that like. You can communicate with and rely on even though like, and like talk to even though we're not in person. But one thing that I would like to say of like what has not worked so far, like, I don't know. Like, this is like how it happens a lot, but I just feel like for academics, like in that subcommittee. Like, we're having a difficult time thinking of like things to do, like, I think are. Like, people have kind of settled on like, oh, we'll just do trivia nights like the entire, like, second half of the term. And like, I don't have anything like against that, but I would love to get like more, like, if we could plan more varied, like, events or things that could. Like, help students, because I know, like, a lot of students are struggling, like. With online school and stuff like that, but I just don't know, like, what we could reasonably do. So, yeah.
Yeah, academics has always been like, you know, a pretty tough, you know, subcommittee in terms of actually getting something going on there, because like. We did try having like those like library tutor nights, you know, we wouldn't get too many people showing up, you like, I think last year Rebecca was like, like. One person actually showed up to one event, right? So it's like, it's pretty hard. In terms of that, which is why we kind of, you know, kind of split it up in terms of college and beyond and academics. Um, but yeah, it's always. Like answering your question, Lily, it's not been the easiest one to want, generate interest and to like come up with ways to do so. Because like most of the people who really want opportunities would be like. High schooler, like juniors and seniors really trying to like find out other opportunities, which is why college and beyond compared to academics, even though it's like. Kind of the same, creating opportunities for students, college beyond tends to fare better due to the fact that. Junior and senior year is when most people like really want to. You know, get better in terms of a subject or A P testing, or you look looking for jobs, so it does, it has been a problem in the past.
Yeah, and I think that's another reason, um, I wanted to have this meeting in the, um, in the second item. Of the agenda, I do want to have time where we can all talk about each subcommittee and come up with ideas. Because I know academics, like you've been. Um. Every, each subcommittee has been, you know, limited to only your four people in that subcommittee, so I want everyone to have time to. Contribute any ideas you have, even if it's not your subcommittee. So we will get to that for sure.
I think that this. Wait, was someone speaking?
That's okay, you can go.
Okay, I think this year has been going. Um, really well, it's my first year and I'm having a lot of fun, I'm really happy with the events that have been going on. And. For me personally, the workload I think is good, I just feel like sometimes some people are taking more and some people are. Not doing enough. Um, but yeah.
Um, I can go next, so far this term, um, I think has been pretty good. I'm really proud of like the work that we've done to better the community, and although I was definitely. Um, ready to like and excited to like do events in person. Um, I'm still really happy that I've gotten like the chance through the commission to like help the community and also to make new friends. And I think Julie, you've been a really great staff liaison, and this is my first year, so I don't really have anything to base it off of. But, um, I really appreciate like the help and the advice, especially to like our academic subcommittee. That you like helped us like move on and like create an event that we were excited for.
Um, I agree, I think this term has been going really smoothly. Because every subcommittee is able to hold at least one event, I think, and so like that's really good, we've had like. Pretty good attendance for most of them, I'm sure. I'm pretty sure, which is like something struggled within prior year and like the year last year, I think. Uh, Julie's been really good at keeping up, that's helping in, and that's putting on task for us. So, yeah, um, yeah, I agree that it's kind of hard to coordinate people's schedules for some community meetings. But like, something, it's like. But I guess, especially with all of the. Because like, we're really busy, one thing we're doing is that we've just, um. So we've been like discussing through text and. Other, but. Staying for nine weeks, so yeah. And I think the size is pretty good, because the size is just right, because I feel like we had more people than not everyone. Have as much to do.
Yeah, going off of that, I think in like in terms of subcommittee, like my first year, we was like about, we did have like three to four people, uh. The only thing we lacked then was communication, but then last year we had a bigger group of people. I think it was like, you know, I think it was like a four to five kind of group kind of situation. And like we had a communication aspect, but it's kind of still. Not as like, you know, coordinated, so like one thing I'd like to also say, like, you know, Julie, like, really compare it to like the past two years. I mean, I guess the pandemic kind of forced us to do this in terms of like having like. A true way to really communicate through Slack, I think like the way you've handled it has been like, that's what allowed us to actually have. You know, successful term so far, because like, in the past, like, you know, it'd just be separate group chats with this different subcommittees or. You know, just having all these reminder emails, but you know, having like Slack be like all these updates, not consistently. Then you, of course, have an opportunity to be looking at all channels, you can actually see what's going on rather than. I mean, you know, having the trust that we're getting things done by ourselves, which is still there, but you know, being, making sure that we're on top of things has been like. Really necessary, so I think like, you know, one thing that's really stood out compared to like the past couple of years. Has been like a true communication platform that's like allowing everybody to be involved. And still look back in terms of other things they need to catch up on as well.
I also want to say, in terms of subcommittee meetings, um, last time I was on youth commission, there was also like a problem with. Scheduling subcommittee meetings when everyone can meet, but I felt like we've actually handled it better this year. Like, it's still not as good, like, I don't, as it could be, because everybody's busy, but I think it's a lot better because we're able to meet online. Right, awesome, I mean, it's really good to hear that, you know, everyone's still. Enjoying the term, I know it's not what anybody would be hoping for with all this, but I think you guys have been doing an amazing job. Um. Ashling, how are you doing? And Cassie, I haven't heard from you, or Hannah?
Um, for me, this is my first term, but I'd say it's going pretty well, the subcommittee meetings have been kind of hard to schedule, but overall, I'd say they were pretty okay for scheduling.
Um, it's my second turn or year this year in youth commission, it's going well, like. Feel like it's easier to meet now, because I feel like last year was really hard to know when meetings were. And then you would remember kind of like the day of and need it right there, it's much easier getting like the week and like emails, feeling like you have a meeting. And it might like, planning meetings are hard, but when like we talk at the little subcommittee, I feel like we get a lot of work done.
Yeah, I agree, I think this year has been a lot more organized than it has in past years, which has made it easier to make sure that every subcommittee has events. So I really like that aspect, and Julie, I think you've been doing a great job with organizing things and staying on top of everything.
Thank you, I mean, I think you guys have been doing a great job, really. And with all these changes and everything, um. Okay, well, good to hear, anything else before we move on from kind of like? How things have been going so far? And we can talk about, you know, solutions for some of this stuff more in a little bit. Nothing else? Okay. Um, let's see, Drew, you want to move us on to the second point then?
Sure, uh, just for the safe side, are there any public comments?
No public comments.
All right, so now second, uh, item on the new business agenda or agenda is, uh, event ideas?
Yes, so, um. Again, these are just kind of some suggestion questions to think about. Um, but I would like to kind of, you know, have a time for each of the subcommittees, we can bring up the subcommittee. If someone wants to talk about what their, kind of their plan is for the, um, rest of the term. Um, and then I'd like everyone to be able to contribute ideas for that subcommittee. If you have anything that's different that we haven't thought of, um. Yeah, does anyone want to volunteer to go first?
Um, I can go first.
In which subcommittee do you want to talk about, Cassie?
For civic engagement. So for the first half of the term, we did the voter registration, and I'm really looking forward to doing the coffee and politics. This spring, I'm not sure how it's going to look, especially since we're online now, but I think. We'll do some brainstorming and get started on that. Yeah, but I would love to hear any ideas for other events or how we can do that.
Yeah, so does anyone else have any ideas of? How coffee and politics might be successful online or anything else that you've thought of in the past that would be a great civic? Um, civic engagement, you know, event or something like that?
I'm a part of civic engagement and like, um, I was thinking about this recently, like how like we might not be able to do it in person because of COVID and everything. I think a really good idea was, um, I don't know if, if everyone like agrees with this, but. If we do do it online, we can do it on a Zoom call, which is not as fun, but still can work. And, um, in the beginning of quarantine, everyone was making like whipped coffee or whatever. So I think that we can all make like whipped coffee and then like give out the recipe for it and then have a Zoom call talking about like coffee and politics. And like how people feel about it and stuff to get more people.
I like that idea.
Um, I'm not completely sure how this works, but now online, there's some influencers, so I'll like buy their followers coffee. They're about to just put a card and then their followers like you buy coffee, I'm not sure how that works, I don't know if that's a good idea, but like. I'm just putting it out, oh, yeah.
I think, you know what, Emily had to say in terms of having like it on Zoom, you know, that's just kind of like our. Like last countermeasure kind of thing, uh, but I do feel like Zoom is like gonna be pretty like, it's still a lot of events to still work. Um, because like on December fourteenth, like I did have a meeting with the other, you know, commissions in Campbell, and I did bring up coffee and politics, um. As like in a successful event and everything, a lot of them were really interested, like, uh, not really just being like local politicians, but also like being commissions as well to like also interact with teenagers, because like. Even like, I doubt not many people know about the different commissions that are in Campbell, so that could also be another great way. You know, for all of us to come together, meet with other commissions as well, kind of see what they're planning. Um, so, you know, we could also generate interest on that, find out like, as a, like another group of people that can be a part of the event. I may, I think we can also like break our rooms as well, whereas like, you know, I think everybody has like, you know, updated Zoom where you can pick which breakout room you want to go to. So you don't have to, like, you can have somebody who can put you in a breakout room, but it gives, you know, teenagers opportunity to like. Hop from one room with a different, like, two different speakers to another and stuff like that, like one room with mayors and so on and so forth.
Yeah, I agree. So for the Zoom option, if you're doing coffee and politics on Zoom, like I know that if you have like the most recent version of Zoom, they allow you to choose your breakout rooms. So for coffee and politics, if you set up like different breakout rooms, like one for local politics. And then another idea would be how would be to have a room discussing the U N sustainable development goals. Because I think those are pretty cool and like good areas to expand upon if you're fascinated by social issues and politics. You guys could have like different rooms covering different topics, and you can have people like hop on to them during the event.
Kind of going off what Drew said, um. That, you know, maybe other people might be interested in what teens' opinions are on things. Just an idea of an event could be something like conversations with teens, like. There's just an event in itself that's just. You guys or other teens that you want to nominate in the area that. Have opinions on things, as we all do, and anybody could join to be able to ask, you know, a group of teens their opinion on things or for advice for things. Just kind of a. Idea that just came to mind.
I like that idea, but I feel like the. Like the name would could be misleading, so it can be like the same concept, because like if it's conversation with teens, especially if you're kind of like, you know. Get more teens involved, really, you know, get them to be interested, they're probably going to think it's like. Talking with other teenagers about these kind of problems rather than talking with these leaders. So I think like, I think their concept works, I think it's like the naming, we can all, you know, certainly take time to think about. Would be like that, you know, deciding factor, making like the event as successful it can be.
Definitely, yeah.
Like, it could be like twenty questions with local leaders or something like that, you know, kind of like make it. Sound interesting, and like we also make it kind of like a game too, because like. Kind of going, I forgot who said it, but like, you know, having like, you know, local mayors had like this U N model. Uh, and like all these like different groups of people, you know, we can also take a little interactive activity where like. They ask the students a question, like you mentioned something pretty important, and we can like it at the end of the event jeopardy kind of thing to see like, you know. What do people gain, like what are like some things they learned that, you know, for sure that these like people that we have involved with. Like, like didn't mention in their talks, and then we can kind of see like, you know, what do people learn overall? Kind of like a local leader versus youth kind of thing, because like, you know, obviously all these local leaders really want to hear the youth's opinion. Speaking of like, ask questions about like, you know, local politics, but also like questions about like. Like, you know, what, like, what are teens really obsessed with, right? Like, you know, what's the latest TikTok dance trend or whatever? And Steve, like, these, like, local politicians, like, you know, know about it too, right? So.
I like that, that's cool, that could be something. Almost maybe something works like that into coffee and politics too.
Okay, well, thank you for those ideas, I wrote them down, so I'll make sure that at the next subcommittee meeting, we'll talk about those.
All right, and then do we have another subcommittee that wants to go next?
Um, I can go. So for environment, we have, I'm thinking we could do two act, we could, I was thinking we could do two activities this semester. And then one would be the online jeopardy that we're still planning, we're going to have a subcommittee meeting right after just to finalize it. But for another one, I was thinking we should do something for Earth Day. And I was thinking something along the line of possibly like a virtual Earth Day Fair. Where students could like come and learn about different. Topics pertaining to the environment and then maybe do some fun activities, and I'd like to have suggestions on that.
Yeah, so the deal with Earth Fair thing kind of actually did come from last year, that was an event we were planning on doing for environment. Um, we actually were like having planning, setting up booths all like along like Campbell Park and stuff, and also like, you know. Talk to younger kids too about ways to recycle better and stuff like that, but turns out on the day we actually had the event, it was raining, and they're like, we were in a rain spell. Um, so we can certainly look back. So we can certainly look back into like those old plans and resources to see that, you know, how can we still incorporate those like on Zoom? Cause like Earth Day has been a pretty big environment event. Uh, speaking from like the last two terms, the first term, um, that when I was here was we had like an, they had an actual park cleanup going on. Um, so like, you know, people would come with all their kids, family, you know, you register them, they go walk out, you know, collect some trash and all that, get their um, volunteer hours. And then like, you know, last year was supposed to be like another park cleanup. But once again, the environment got the best of us. But, you know, we could certainly look at past, like the past things that we did to see how we can incorporate for this year.
I had a question about park cleanups. Um, like, I'm not sure if this is allowed, but like, would it be possible to do like park cleanups, but maybe have like staggered shifts? Or, because that way it would be like social distance. And I don't know, like, uh, like obviously like everyone wouldn't have to do it, but in case like there are people in the community who would still want to do like environmental cleanup type things? Would that work? I'm not really sure.
Yeah, that's actually something I was going to share a little bit later, but um, volunteer, like events or organization things, like a trash cleanup, um, is something we can actually do in person. Um, everyone has to, you know, fill out a volunteer form and we do need to keep the groups kind of small. Um, I'd say like 20 people or less. So that is a possibility. It is. If that's something we want to do, that's just the youth commission doing it. And then we promote and, you know, encourage other people to join in virtually or, you know, from wherever they are. Or if you guys want to break out into smaller groups to be able to get more people outside people involved, that's something we can talk about.
I think park cleanups are like in terms of like the environment subcommittee especially has have been very, uh, you know, effective. Only because like, you know, one, high schoolers always need volunteer hours and, you know, doing park cleanups are like easy way to do it. And the thing is, I feel like, you know, we could still run a regular park cleanup. We require everybody to wear masks and everything to stay social distance. Because like the my first year, when we first did like at Campbell Park, everybody was, you know, socially distanced. There were only like groups of three or four going about, but still it was like, there was always space going on. Cause like, you know, there's so many aspects of the park you can go to. So I feel like there shouldn't be a problem in terms of like having like a normal event, but of course in just enforcing masks and, you know, social distance rules. We can always have a couple commissioners walking around to make sure people are following those rules. Um, so that could be an idea, but you know, we can leave it any open to other people's suggestions, like in terms of just running like a regular event in person, but enforcing those rules.
Yeah, I would want to check with, um, with Natasha to see what size group she's comfortable with. Um, because I have seen other volunteer events for trash cleanup and they are maxing it at like 20 people. So, you know, since we are putting our, the city name on it, we don't want to do something too gigantic that, you know, can look bad for the, to the public. So, um, we'll see kind of what the max is that she's comfortable with us organizing. Um, but I can check into that. But I did get the okay that like, you know, we can do one as a commission together. So at least the 15 of us can do it. Um, any other ideas that can be, you know, they can be different, um, environment kind of ideas for the subcommittee? Or ways to make the, you know, the virtual event successful. Cause I think, you know, sometimes people are, they are getting tired of the Zoom. So, um, I know for some other events, I've thought about having a special like website for it. Um, I think you guys had a good idea with the raffle, um, in your first event, even though Instagram didn't cooperate for that. But we can do something like that again to try to make it better. Any other ideas for environment?
Um, this is just something that I would be interested in going to, but like, uh, just an event that was informative, like about like how to like properly like recycle and like water recycle and like, or like i- if like, or like how to take care of like a compost box or something or like different things like that.
Yeah, I think that'd be pretty cool. Cause like, I don't think most people know about the different recycle labels there are. Um, another quick idea, um, you know, kind of stemming from like the all commissions meeting I went to was like also having the different commissions in Campbell working together. So I feel like with environment, we could possibly reach out to the Parks and Rec people and see, you know, there's any group, like, you know, united projects we could possibly do. Cause like when you do park cleaners, we always like, you know, kind of do with Parks and Rec or kind of use their connections to actually get that event running. So maybe, you know, one thing like we could do as a commission, like for this second half of this term, is also see how can we work with other commissions, uh, to really like, you know, have like joint events as well. So there could be like other possibilities, like have maybe meetings with them to kind of see, you know, are there, what other events can we all possibly do?
I really like all those ideas. Thank you. I've been taking notes on them. I'll keep them in mind.
All right. Awesome. All right. After environment, anybody else want to go next?
I could go for recreation. I've been enjoying the events I've been putting on. We've gone two done and we're already planning a one in February Valentine's Day craft box. We've been sticking just with craft box for preschoolers. Because there's not really much we want, we could do or stuff that we wanted to do. We can't legally do it on Zoom. But I know we've been talking about doing one with seniors and talking with loners to put an event on. But other than that, we don't really know what else we can do.
Any ideas from anyone else about what recreation could possibly do for other events or senior events or different things?
Um, one thing I'd be interested in going to is like game nights, like, like I, I know you guys were like thinking like an Among Us game, but that's kind of like over now. And I know we couldn't like do that, but I'd definitely be interested in going to like a game night with like other teens to like, yeah.
Um, I have an idea, kind of, of, kind of like what someone said, like a game night. In school, we, like the whole eighth grade, we met and like there was a couple of different breakout rooms and each breakout room was like a different game. So maybe you can do something like that, maybe have like a certain amount of time in each breakout room and then you can switch.
I like that idea. That's good. Does anyone else, been to any other game nights besides ours? Nothing else, really?
I feel like this game night stuff would work, but I feel like with the recreation, you know, most events that were very successful were of course the whole in-person interaction thing. So I feel like, you know, most of the games that we could possibly do online are probably already being played like on a day-to-day basis too. Which could like, I'm, I'm not saying it's like not going to work. I'm just saying this could be like one thing we have to look out for in terms of planning like a game night. It's like, you know, how can we still make it interactive enough for people to actually want to show up? Cause like we could have all these events. You know, make it seem like, like here are games that we all know of, but the thing is like they can also be played on a daily basis. So to really get in the kind of like, to get in like a lot of people interested would be like the next question. Cause like that really does decide how successful an event really is.
Maybe you guys could do something like a pen pal thing where you match students who sign up with like other students they don't know. And then, and then they get like the interactive aspect of, of events, right? So they can just like write to each other and they can make a new friend. Or another option, you could do like a sort of scavenger hunt, but like, I'm not sure how fun a Zoom scavenger hunt would be.
I'm actually just interested in knowing, like, is there even a way, a way for us to do like drag in movies? Cause I know like social justice had an event that was canceled because we couldn't play, we can't play movie over Zoom. But is there any way that like we could do that in the next, um, like few months?
So I have some information on this. I don't know if Julie's been able to share, um, recently the update. So the Gilroy Library, a part of our library system, bought with a grant, a huge screen, a huge projector and speaker. So we have the equipment that you guys are welcome to use. The problem has been trying to find a space to use it. Um, because one, timing is also an issue too, because it has to be almost completely dark when we use it, because the way the lighting works. And then parking lots where we'd be able to get a lot of cars in. The tricky thing has been that a lot of parking lots have trees which would block the view. So I've been working with multiple libraries, Saratoga and Milpitas, to try to see if they have spaces that we can throw this event. Um, but if you guys can hunt around Campbell and find a flat parking lot that's willing to host us, um, I have the equipment. So that part is good.
That's awesome, Rebecca. Haven't heard about that. But yeah, I think that was one of the problems we were running into also was location. If anyone can think of any large empty parking lots. We're open to ideas. Um, but yeah, other than that, the movie events would be hard with, um, restrictions right now. Hopefully things will get better. And, you know, maybe in the spring, we could have a park one where people don't have to drive in and that would make things easier. Um, but other than that, we do need a large parking lot or less restrictions to make the movie things happen. All right. Any other ideas for recreation?
Maybe, uh, maybe you guys could do chalk art. Just, you know, like just have people go draw on it and stuff on the sidewalks.
That would be cool. I know we've definitely thrown around ideas of like having some kind of virtual competition where you guys are the judges of things, you know? Whether it was a decorated house competition or something, but we could do chalk sideways, side, the sidewalk chalk art competition.
I think that would be pretty, you know, big amongst, you know, families with very young children. So I feel like that would be pretty successful of that.
Cool. Any other ideas for recreation? All right. Let's see, we've got social justice, wellness, college or academics.
Um, Caitlin is not here and she told me to sort of take notes for the ideas. So academics, we.
Yeah. So does anyone know what kind of events academics has done before besides tutoring?
Um, I remember last year, something that we were planning on doing, but didn't end up doing was kind of like a reading day. Um, at the, we were going to do it at the library and kind of host it like pajamas and hot chocolate and have like drawing activities for kids where they can like make bookmarks and things like that. I don't know if that would work online, but you could do something where it's like something related to books. Maybe for like elementary schoolers.
I think, um, I think this just depends on like the, uh, like rules to like COVID. But, um, something that one of my clubs has been doing at school to like still have people go in person and stuff is like have a social distance, like kind of like picnic. And people can bring their like homework or books to just have a different environment to be in instead of being at home. And to just like get the tutoring still maybe, but also to just get stuff done. But it all just depends on how COVID's like happening and like if we can do those events with being social distancing, distancing and like a picnic type of like scenario.
Um, I also feel like that would be really difficult though, because like doing homework on the ground is kind of like, really, if you don't have a desk. And also because now a lot of kids have assignments that are online. So a lot of times they're going to need like wifi or data to be able to access their homework. So I just think like a park event, I don't think it's a good idea because of COVID at this point. And I think it would be really difficult to do homework at that time.
Yeah, the wifi is definitely a good point that we usually don't have to think about as much. Um, but yeah, with restrictions right now, that probably wouldn't be able to happen. But it would be a nice idea for the spring if things get better.
Um, I would like to also offer that the green space behind the library, um, it's not huge, but, um, if restrictions ever allowed and you guys felt comfortable doing it, we recently extended our wifi quite a bit, um, into all the way through our parking lot and into that green space. So that's a thing to consider.
Maybe you guys could do something for Read Across America Day, which is on March 2nd. So I guess like if students have access to books, you guys could put together a book recommendation list or something. And then if possible, maybe a book exchange could occur. But like, that's only if it's possible, but you guys could do some high reading event.
Yeah, I really like that idea of book exchange. Cause I remember like in elementary school, we would have them and be like the best day out of the year. And, um, I think one thing we could also do is like, I don't know if a lot of like little kids would be able to sit for it. Like a Zoom, like book read alouds and maybe we could also have like the bookmark coloring that Caitlin suggested at the same time.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't there like an event, I fully forgot what it was called, where like, you know, somebody did do some reading? Cause I do remember like one time I like, I woke up late that day, but I just like woke up to hear a Moog reading to a Zoom like meeting and all that stuff. And people were still on the Zoom call. I mean, I found, I find them boring, but anyways, everybody else found like the reading to be like, you know, very interesting and all that stuff. So I feel like, you know, that could certainly work. I mean, people were like, you know, I think a lot of little kids there and everything. So I mean, the like the read along or, you know, maybe that could certainly work.
Moog did a great job reading that children's book that day. He did a really awesome job. Um, yeah, that's been a part of our, the recreation's craft boxes, um, their Zoom events. We've been reading a book at the end of it. Just to kind of close out the event. And yeah, the kids really seemed to be really engaged and have fun with it. So um, that could definitely be something we did more that was more focused on just the reading.
And another thing we could possibly do is like writing workshop type events, like free writing. I, I'm not super interested in that kind of thing, but I know like my, my high school has had that. And I think there are clubs that probably would do that in middle school, if people are interested in that.
That's a good idea. Or what about like, uh, poetry writing or short story writing like contest? I don't know if that's super academics focused, but I think it could be if we did something like that.
Um, speaking of poetry, thank you for reminding me. If you guys are interested, we probably could collaborate on this program. The Santa Clara County Poet Laureate is going to be hosting a program through the library in April. Um, but if we want to merge it and make it a big fun poetry thing, get you guys involved, um, just let me know.
We could have like consecutive events where we do like a poetry workshop and then a poetry slam, like people then read all the things that they wrote if they want to.
I feel like another thing that could work, that could like, I think academics and recreation could possibly do this is where recreation kind of has like this like little art project thing, right? Where students like draw something, for example. And the thing is, and then the academic, so you can all take those And the thing is, and then the academic, so you can all take those pictures and then give it to like another group of like same group of people, right? But then like randomly and whichever kid gets, they write their own story towards that picture. Kind of like writing out like, you know, whatever their creative process brings out. And then we can like kind of put it like little collage thing or like uh shout outs on our Instagram, for example, or our website, where you know, anybody in the public can see, right? Like, you know, this like this cool event and like, this is what the little kids of Campbell are coming up with for the creative arts and stuff like that. So that could be like another joint uh subcommittee project, so yeah.
Similar to what Drew said, um, I don't know if like, if anyone has been to Disneyland, but they have like this thing where you can go in and there's someone like teaching you how to draw Disney characters. So that might be fun for like kids if we like played a video. And then everyone could just like draw along and then we could show it at the end or like something like kind of like Drew said about like um, drawing and then presenting it at the end. I think that would be kind of cute, especially if it was like Disney themed, because I know, I feel like that's pretty popular.
These are good ideas. I like it. Yeah, anything else off of those ideas or academic kind of focused? I think we've got some ideas of things that that subcommittee might be able to work off of. Alright. And next subcommittee, we've got college or wellness or social justice?
College and beyond, we were thinking like we have to start planning the job fair, which we
Um, Carmen, I think you're frozen or you're frozen on my screen.
And having um, just like links that people can click and then descriptions for people for people to read and then we could put like a check in and then a checkout, see how many people come. Then like, I'm, I don't know, we did raffles in prior years, so I don't know if we can do that this year. But maybe we could, like based on the check in and checkout tickets that people might fill in. But yeah, I'm open to more suggestions and more ways we can run this.
Yeah, I know you guys started talking about the job fair a little bit. Um, and I know that the Civic Improvement Commission usually kind of runs it with us, um, but I did talk with them and they would like to take a little bit more of a backseat this year. So it'll be kind of more in our hands. So any ideas or things you guys want to do? We can, you know, work with and then they're there to support us if we, you know, want some more of their help. So yeah, you know, unfortunately, I know when we first talked about it, we were thinking of possible in-person scenarios. But it does look like we're gonna need to plan for a virtual job fair this year, so. Any ideas on how to make that success- successful or things you would like to see at a virtual job fair?
I mean, in order to actually make it work, I think it'd be the same kind of, you know, concept as coffee and politics, you know, using breakout rooms, for example. To like have the different uh businesses and all that. Uh, so I think that I'd like, that'd be like the first kind of like answer to that question, like whether the possible ways to still have the job fair. So like, that'd be like the first way.
My fear with breakout rooms for like each business is if you know, certain businesses are just sitting in their breakout rooms for like an hour with nobody visiting because they aren't interested. Um, that's just one thing I'm thinking with the, if we're doing a Zoom kind of event for that. Just a thought. Any other thoughts with Zoom job fair?
Um, for the job fair, like, yeah, I think that's a really good point, because it would be bad if there was like a company that didn't really have a lot of interest, but what if we um, like made it more of like, instead of like a live Zoom but almost like put together a slideshow and we could ask certain companies maybe to like submit a video about like what the job is and maybe like F eight, like um uh FAQs or something like that where they could answer ahead of time and then we could just present it to people that are interested or something like that. That way like they do it beforehand and then um, it's not breakout rooms or I don't know, I guess maybe it still would be breakout rooms, but it would be us instead of the actual like representative.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I was kind of thinking about just like sprucing up the um the webpage for the job and volunteer opportunities. So we can spruce it up to be really highlight each business that is looking for um, looking to hire. And then we can have those FAQs kind of answered. Maybe we can get a short interview with somebody who works there saying what they like about the job. Things like that. It's another idea.
I don't know if anyone mentioned this, um, but I think another difficulty with trying to do Zoom job fair that's live in person is like even when you go into breakout rooms, like you can't have multiple people talking at a time. So if another person shows up and wants to ask questions, like you can't talk over each other. So that might just make it a little bit more difficult as well, like something to think about.
I think what we can do for that is, you know, most of the seniors here could probably, you know, reflect on this part too. But like, most like college visits, for example, everything's online and like, you have to, you know, what they do is like they have the students type in all their questions into the chat. Um, and they always have like, you know, one person who like picks some questions that like, you know, seem to be like common trend and like say it for everybody to hear. And then they have somebody else that you know, answer the questions like in the chat itself. So that could be something we could do. Cause like another thing I was thinking about was like maybe, I don't think it, I think it's kind of like more competitive aspect, which would not work. But it's gonna be like, you know, different jobs, like with like the same kind of ideas, like you know, summer jobs, like all being like one breakout room, for example. You could like ask like a general question and then we could be like, if you have any specific, like where they like all present, like you know, what their opportunities are, but you know, what the job is like. And then after like that timeframe, you can be like, if any of you like, you know, uh, personal questions, let this main person know and then we can set up a breakout room just for you and that company and stuff like that. That could be something we could do where it's like, everybody has like the general kind of job idea. And then after like an allotted amount of time, then we do another amount of allotted time for one-on-one kind of questions for a specific company. Rather than like having that breakout room idea where people pick where they go, you have the general idea to where you avoid somebody sitting in a breakout room for one hour.
I like that idea. That's a good one. Any other thoughts on job fair virtually? Does the um, college and beyond subcommittee, do you guys feel like you can take on, you know, finding several businesses that are looking for job opportunities? Or would you like help with that from other people? You know, we can make it so that each commissioner find one business that's look, that's hiring or each subcommittee find a business that's hiring and get some information so we can kind of split it up, because I know that is kind of a big event for the term and kind of a big task. How are you guys feeling about that?
Um, I think it would be nice if like everyone could help us find some businesses, because like and I think it would be nice if we could ha- get like quite a few to come, so.
I remember we kind of touched on this last time when we were talking about the job fair. But um, because of like COVID and like unemployment, do you think that will, it'll be hard to find job opportunities, especially for teens right now or?
Yeah, it definitely might be. I I'm not sure, because I haven't looked. I think if we could set a goal for each person to try to find a business that's hiring, that would be great. And then we can check in, you know, at our, not tomorrow meeting, but the next meeting. Um, and kind of see where we're at and see if people are having a lot of trouble finding opportunities. Then we can rethink, you know, the plans. But it would be nice if maybe everyone can start to look for at least just one business that's hiring. And we can kind of see where we're at on the twenty fifth.
Too hard to find like businesses or something. We could always open it up to just summer opportunities or like opportunities after school, after um, the end of the school year in general.
Yeah, we can look for jobs, we can look for volunteer opportunities, we can look for virtual things. There might be some virtual stuff out there that's unique this year. Um, yeah, so I think it'd be great if everyone could look for something. Any other ideas or thoughts for college and beyond or the job fair?
I do have a quick idea for more of the beyond. I kind of just thought about this, but maybe doing like a baking or cooking on Zoom to learn how to bake or cook for people going into college who may not know how to.
I like that. Like a college cooking basics lesson before you go, go away from home. Okay, how about, let's see, how about wellness or social justice?
Um, for wellness, it also includes seniors, so we've been trying to like write letters and start a letter writing thing that we could send to like um, just your retirement home or something. Um, so we're working on that. We don't have anything else planned for this term, so any ideas could be useful.
Yeah, I know a lot of you guys have talked about, you know, mental health being really important in um, your interviews and things like that. So and a lot of you wanted to be a part of the wellness subcommittee, so you know, sorry that everyone couldn't be there. But any other ideas that you can think of that would be beneficial for a time like this? That wellness could put on.
Something that I think would be pretty simple to do over li- uh, online is a guided meditation type of event. Um, or if you can get together and you can, it can be like targeted towards beginners who don't really know how to meditate.
I feel like another event that could be kind of good um, for an online thing. Um, I know a lot of counselors when they're helping um, with students with mental health problems and stuff. They make them write down how they feel on a sticky note and they wait a week and then they write something else on a sticky note about how they're feeling and see if they've improved or not. I feel like that's something that's helped a lot of my friends and they've seen a lot. How they can like improve from that.
Do an online yoga series, like people can do that from distance and then you can get instructors. Kind of like do a webinar type thing.
All good ideas. I like it. I know Carmen and Ada are big yogis and have done a video over the summer for virtual recreation that was really cool. And maybe they would even lead a teen event for yoga, maybe. Um, any other wellness ideas? I think those are some good ideas. Alright, and how about social justice?
Yeah, so um, social justice last, like the last I don't know, quarter? I don't even know how the, is semester, how does, I don't know how the terms are split up, but anyway, we've just done one event. We were gonna do um, like a movie night event, but then we couldn't. And then we did um uh, immigration speaker series, like immigration reform. And then this semester, uh, you guys might know our first event, we're trying to do a um, virtual poster making type of event for um, like to celebrate the Women's March and then be- because Black History Month is February and Women's History Month is March. We want to do events targeted towards that, but we don't have like specific, specific ideas yet, because we're not sure. Like, the, there's always the option of like speaker series, but if you guys have any other suggestions, that would be really helpful.
I really like the poster making event idea. That was something, that was a good idea to me and I hadn't thought of anything like that. Um, trying to think of just more ways to bring just awareness to things, you know, that's not not too in your face, but just bringing awareness to things that people don't even think about. And you know, maybe that's coming up with um different kind of Instagram posts that we can post. They don't have to be big events, you know, they can just be getting some good information, putting together a nice slideshow, a little slide of Instagram posts. I can send you some accounts that I've followed that make really good use of this. Um, and that would be something that'd be cool for you guys to have as a project, come up with either bi-weekly or monthly posts that just bring more attention to something and and a way for people to get involved, you know, a link to how to get involved in something.
Um, this is just an idea. You guys can also do an activist a-thon, like it's sort of like a hackathon, if you have people like name an issue that they're passionate about and then kind of design a campaign or like a way to advocate for and spread awareness that's unique. And then you can have people, and then like we can judge on it and then pick a winner.
Yeah, social justice is kind of a hard one too, but I think you guys have been doing a really great job. And I think any way you can just spread the word more on things would be good, so. You guys got good, really good speakers for your first event. If you want to find some more speakers on another topic. I think that one went really well. That we could do in the spring. Um. Yeah. Any other ideas that could go with social justice?
Um, maybe we could like work with the environment subcommittee and do like a, an event about like how to advocate for the environment, how to like change your own behaviors to be more environmentally friendly. And um, to like how to get involved to take action to protect the environment and stuff. Like a speaker series or something.
Um, I really like the idea and I think like if we're partnering up with environment, we should probably like raise awareness about environmental justice too. Like how the environment, how like people are disproportionately affected by environmental factors and stuff.
That's a good idea. I would enjoy learning more about that kind of stuff too. Any other ideas? Alright. I know we are kind of going over our time, so I'm kind of looking through to see what were the most important things to want to get through. Um. Thank you everyone for contributing. Lots of ideas for those. Um, I think we can just go ahead and move on to Um, I think we can just go ahead and move on to our final new business point.
Yeah, so the last thing for new business is commission ideas.
Yeah, so this is just kind of. Like you said, we, the term's been going pretty well, um. But I know I've heard that. Communication can be an issue or lining up schedules. Any ideas of how to make that better? Do you guys think having smaller groups in the future would be easier, you know, less people's schedules to line up? Um, do you like having at least four people in the group? Any ideas like that?
I think four people has been good, because I think it's like a good spread of, um, each person can do enough, and it's not too little, not too much for each person. Um, yeah, I think it's been a pretty good amount of people, I feel like if there's less people, it would be kind of more difficult, and more ideas would not be. Proposed to the subcommittees as well.
Yeah, I agree with that part, like it's sometimes easier to come up with ideas when you have more brains thinking about it, so I think four is a good number as well.
Alright. And I guess not many other issues have come up, unless anyone else can think of anything. I'm glad everyone's been using Slack and having um, success with that, um. Let's see.
I have a question for something to say just, because I feel like a lot of times we advertise events and then. Like every time, we just have to like email teachers to try and email students or. Like things like that, and I was wondering, like, do we have like a mailing list at all, like is there any way that we could? Like have a place that we could regularly advertise to people, because it, like it seems like difficult to get. Like a lot of people to come, because you have to individually like, like rush to get all the emails sent on time and all that type of stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have. Let's see, I have a list of all kind of main school contacts, um, of like. The main people of the school, like the principals and things like that, so I'll send it, I usually send it to those kind of. Contact lists, um, other than that, posting on our Instagram. And any other teachers, specific teachers that you guys have, is I guess what we've been doing mostly. Are there any other ideas of other sources for sending out information?
Oh, sorry, I was just saying, so instead of always having to send it to the same people and then have them try and communicate it, like. Uh, just ask people if they like want to hear, like, um. If they want to hear about other events like this like in the future, and having it like directly to people who are interested in like certain types of events. Would be my idea.
Okay, gotcha. Rebecca, did you have an idea?
Yeah, you guys are welcome to use the Campbell Library Facebook if you want to post events there, just send me stuff.
Thank you. Yeah, I know, um, Campbell Recreation, they have like a constant contact, which is like. You know, an email that they send out weekly that just shows all their events and different things coming up. We could potentially set up something like that, that's our own, you know, the youth convention, constant contact. And then any emails that we've got from schools or. Past participants, you know, we could add them to that email list and have something like that sent out for sure. That's a good idea. Maybe we can make um, an Excel doc that's on the drive that um, everyone can put in. Emails that you have from any contacts that you know are good. For spreading the word for things, and then everyone can add all their emails on there, that way we have them all in one place, just to be able to send out. Mass information. Alright. Cool, well, I think that's good, I think we got, shared a lot of good ideas and everything, so thank you for that. Um. And I think we can move on from new business trip.
Next on the agenda is, well, information only, so I guess calendar reminders. Or the totally different thing.
Uh, I guess just saying that our next meeting is tomorrow.
Alright, so the information has been passed, um, then I. Are there any public comments or any last remarks from the commissioners?
No public comment?
Alright, then. I'd like to adjourn this meeting at two fifteen P M.